After extensive preparations, we're going to call this meeting to order. Uh, the Lakeport Planning Commission, will you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Froyo?
Here.
Commissioner Wicks?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell is absent. Chocreen.
Here.
Okay, acceptance of the agenda. I see two items. I see two items on the agenda. Some other stuff. Any urgency items tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
I didn't think so. Accept potential motion on the agenda?
Well, Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as posted.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is posted, accepted. Do we have any public input on item 4A that is not related to an agenda item?
Mr. Chair, we didn't receive anybody. Steve, do we have an audience this evening? You can ask and see if there's any public comment from...
We are stunned and amazed and excited to see an actual audience. Is anyone here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? We have two agenda items, one for an architectural and design review. The apartments on Main Street, and the other is this exciting update on the 11th Street corridor project. So we'll be getting to those right after this item. Anyone want to speak on items not related to those? Seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and move on. Consent calendar...
Nothing on the consent calendar this evening.
No minutes, no nothing.
I had Linda all tied up in getting other annexation applications together. So you'll have previous minutes at our special meeting on the 28th.
Excellent. So we can move right along to six, our regular calendar, and you want to take MA and B because we have the applicant here, right? Okay, then our first item on the regular calendar, out my cheaters, is item A. Jonathan Bridges is the applicant for AR-19-06 and CP-19-12. Application for an architectural design review that allows a redesign of a 10,720 square foot two-story building impacted by fire damage at 1125 North Main Street. Thank you. Zach?
Yes, uh, well, without being too redundant here, that project is an architectural design review, which would allow the redesign of the two-story, 10,000-square-foot building, which was significantly impacted by a fire. The redesign would include changing the roof pitch, roof materials, front facade, siding material, and color of an existing building at 1125 North Main Street. The property is, under the general plan designation, is high-density residential, and the zoning is R3, high-density residential, which is, being a multifamily housing unit, would be consistent with that zoning. The project consists of a redesign of a 10,720-square-foot two-story building formerly known as the Bel Air Apartments. On November 12th, 2018, the building was significantly impacted by a fire that destroyed the southern portion of the two-story building. The entire building is currently uninhabitable. At the time of the fire, the multifamily building had 14 units. As part of this project, no additional units are being proposed. Still, it would remain with the rebuilding, would be a 14-unit project. The proposed project consists of exterior modifications of the structure, which would include the demolition of the existing flat roof, changing to a pitched roof with asphalt shingles, brown in color, right here, packet. The existing concrete walls would remain, however, art deco features would be removed or covered, as well as replaced with modern trim. The new paint color on the building and the trim would be light tan, better known as a Swiss coffee color. No changes or modifications to the existing carport structures are proposed with this project, and so there'd be no additional parking. The, like I stated earlier, the building is a 10,720-square-foot building. It would, with the redesign, it would remain that size. The applicant has indicated that the fire in the building destroyed a number of the art deco architectural features associated with the design of the original building. The building was originally, had a flat roof that was subject to frequent leaks and is proposing the addition with a pitched roof. The applicant has also indicated the design of the building with a pitched roof in tin color would be consistent with the neighboring building located at 1101 North Main Street. The addition of the pitched roof would provide an interior location for the heating, cooling systems, as well as all utilities, instead of having air conditioners sticking out the window and whatnot. The applicant concluded that reconstruction would modernize the interior and exterior of the older building and representing a significant upgrade for those new tenants. As stated earlier, it represents an art deco design, kind of a Mediterranean design, some may call it, but it dates back to probably the 1930s, 1940s. The building reflects the only example of that kind of design in this city and really does not represent the historic theme of the city. The city staff has said that, you know, we appreciate the design, however, we also want to see the building rebuilt. And that's one of the prime moving factors in this situation. Anyway, although there is a significant desire to protect the historical integrity of the downtown area, this building does not reflect that time period or the historical appearance of the city, and it's working to preserve. A condition shall be added that the applicant shall provide a detailed photograph of the art deco elements, features, as well as the elements of the existing building that can be used. In the future, developer would like to return the building to the art deco design. So that would be in our file. If somebody in the future wants to bring it back, that design, they could take that opportunity. Parking for the 14-unit multifamily building would remain the same with 12 covered parking areas and two uncovered parking areas. Under the parking requirements, it would, there would be a requirement for 14 covered and seven uncovered parking spaces with a total of 21 parking spaces. However, this is a 14, like stated earlier, it's 14 dwelling units, it's what it was previously. There's no intensification of the overall use, so therefore, the existing parking should be adequate and no requirement for additional parking. A condition of approval has been added that a landscape plan shall be required prior to the issuance of the building permit. The landscaping plan shall be installed prior to the issuance of occupancy. The landscape plan shall include drought-tolerant planting on the property, consistent with the state water conservation requirements. The plans were provided to the building officials, city engineers, city public works, Lakeport disposal, police, and fire district for their review. Their comments have been added as part of your staff report. At the time, plans were not sent to the air quality management district. However, a condition has been added that there be a potential for, there'd be a condition for potential asbestos mitigation if it's determined to be located within the building. The conditions of approval would address all the other concerns raised, as well as the building permit process. The general plan encourages promoting a vibrant, healthy, pedestrian-oriented downtown commercial district as the heart of the city. Furthermore, the enhancement of the high-density residential building promotes an important component along North Main Street region in our community. The proposed restoration of the building at its proposed location reflects an objective by fostering economic growth while complementing the existing land use, as well as providing, under our housing element, encourages the preservation of existing multifamily housing. Staff recommends the planning commission find the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA and approve the architectural design review application subject to the conditions of approval set forth in the staff report. This year's task would be next, with staff presentation.
Thank you. I noticed your type was larger than mine. I think we have the applicant here. I did have a couple of questions, and I don't know if you guys had some questions before we went out. It might be a little more efficient if you guys have some questions and throw them out there and then help the applicant out.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll come through.
Let's go ahead, and we'll hold off on the public hearing aspect first. Let's go ahead and get some commissioner questions.
Good evening. In looking, in looking through all of this, I have a couple of questions. One regarding the ordinance itself, regulating this and the general plan. I'm not going to try and make a big snake about this, but part of our A and D review requires a few things. One of them is a landscape plan. What we got was a piece of paper that showed the existing landscaping, but really, there's nothing indicating any future landscaping. And that goes to also the project conditions number three, when it talks about the front of the building and the sidewalks. There's no proposed plan showing new sidewalk upgrades or notations of such. Although it's in the conditions themselves, there's nothing other than the mention that was going to be some sort of an upgrade with the curb gutter sidewalk issue. So that's number one. Number two, so far as the general plan goes, and looking through all of it, there is a program that's listed, and I know it's in a weird spot, but it's something that crossed our path a while ago. And it's program PR 1.1, or 1.10-B. And what it is, is its heritage sites. And what it says is, prior to altering any structure with historical significance within this Lakeport, general plan shall be consulted, and alterations shall be in compliance with the general plan policies. For structures over 45 years old and architectural historians and historic archaeologists should conduct archival and/or field research to determine the structure's historical value. And then it talks about if it's going to be moved. I bring this up only because I was contacted by some family members who actually had relatives work on that building, expressed that they liked the art deco and wanted to know whether it was going to be retained or not. And so, in looking through all of the information, I said, "Well, I'll ask the right questions." So those are the two questions I have. Number one, is landscape plan to be reviewed this evening or at later date, because we don't have one? And number two, does program 1.10B apply to this building? Because it was built in 1929, started in '27, so...
Well, I'll address the easy one first, and we'll kind of work backwards from there. The first one in regards to proposed sidewalks. There, the issue there is that because of our current thresholds, you know, this being a project that would be above, it's roughly 60,000 right now, you know, a project that comes in, it's roughly about $60,000 or more, would trigger right-way improvements. That includes improvements to damaged right-way improvements. That's what's really here. We wouldn't be asking them to do half- width improvements to the street, but the public works department did express interest with the damage to the curb and sidewalk area there. So it would be replacing like-for-like. The second one in regards to landscaping is that this project is a bit of, I agree. I mean, I'm not going to argue that the architectural design review standards don't require that in place. The anomaly here is that this isn't your standard, typical architectural design review. This is trying to replace, you know, trying to get a fire-damaged, blinded structure back in, up and running. And I mean, this was, we fast-tracked this application specifically by trying to get it where we can have a schedule where it is improved before it has to suffer through another winter in its current damage state. So the landscaping is kind of already existing. We'd like to see some improvements that kind of fall a little better in with state regulations in regard to drought resistance, but for the most part, this is an existing project site. So I mean, the focus, yeah.
So to that, then, condition six states that the applicant shall prepare and submit a detailed final landscaping plan. If one doesn't exist for preliminary review, how are we supposed to determine whether or not condition six can be applicable?
Yeah, I mean, I would stand that the existing landscaping is in place, you know, whether it be, you know, some of it's quite damaged and it wasn't maintained very well in its existing status. So I mean, in that case, you know, we're looking at just trying to bring it further into compliance, but if this building did not burn down, you wouldn't have any, you know, change or opportunity to update the landscaping.
Okay, so my final question on that is, then, when a landscaping plan is put in place, because it's, the final building permit is, according to condition six, is contingent upon receiving that plan. If the plan is simply, we're going to leave everything there as is, without doing anything to it, then shouldn't we have some documentation or some sort of something that shows the city council when it comes to them that we looked at and said, "Okay, we agree, we'll let this go because there's no landscaping plan." But if there's going to be a landscaping plan for building permit, we should at least have something on record that says that we acknowledge that it's going to be or not be.
I think that's something that you guys will have to weigh in your decision-making this evening. I mean, you know, this is, you know, we kind of took the approach that this is, you know, somewhat different than, you know, a brand-new constructed building that's coming before you. This is, you know, more about getting a blinded structure, you know, and getting 14 lost housing units back up and available to the public. So I mean, the landscaping wasn't really, I mean, it's, it doesn't, the issue is that it doesn't meet current, you know, Mwellow, you know, the modern landscaping requirements, but there is landscaping there. It's just, so we kind of see that this wasn't a huge issue, that we could move this project forward even without a specific landscaping plan. But if the planning commission agrees with staff's decision in that right, that's completely within your, within your purview to examine.
Okay.
And can you repeat the, the specific general plan, one that you had?
You'll find it in open space parks recreation plea or not. It's page 85, and it's policy PR 1.10, item B, program PR 1.10B. It's kind of in an odd spot, but I think it had, I think it had to do more with open space and creating open space, or vice versa.
Commissioner Froyo? Do you have any questions?
I wanted to kind of camp on that one. I can see where Commissioner Wicks is going with this. Sometimes we approve things here, and they're in the conditions, and they're not being followed through. Dollar General's another example. We don't have the Harold Taylor street light in, and other landscaping that was promised of a certain size. You know, it seems like it's, you know, Commissioner Wicks is trying to get this now, get it hammered out, instead of after the final inspection is done.
Just for the record, the final inspection on that one's not done. Occupancy has been granted, but they are still going to be required to meet those conditions in regards to putting in the street lighting, and other elements. The landscaping one, I understand the commission's frustration in there, but I mean, per our ordinance, it's based on the size of the container that it comes in, and not necessarily the size of the plant when it's planted. And I would agree, I think the landscaping in there does not look like it does, but we don't have too much authority to go beyond what was written there. We will absolutely continue to monitor it and make sure that if it dies, it is replaced.
Strange thing, Commissioner Taylor used to go out to the project at Dollar General, and he looked for the wiring that wasn't there and gave them an opportunity to put that in many times. And it sure seems like they were determined not to put that street light in. So that's kind of, those kind of actions are, you know, what makes Commissioner Wicks want to dot his i's and cross his t's.
Let's stay on this. I had a couple of questions. Have you got any?
I don't want one, I'm just curious, in light of what happened to the building. I didn't see anything about fires, sprinklers. Maybe we could ask the applicant himself, is that required?
I believe from the building department, our building official said it would not be required as far as the age of the building and that kind of thing.
My questions were around the general age of the building. Had it been analyzed for historical status. I see what you're going about how it's the only art deco thing in the city, and it doesn't necessarily fit with the overall architecture of the city, but then I was stumped to come up with what the overall architecture of the city looks like. I don't have a style, you know, I have two blocks of Main Street, I can kind of go back to the 1800s, but I don't have it there, there. And other than the fact that there may be some savings in the reconstruction, just, I didn't know enough in here, and again, maybe the applicant can fill in some of the blanks on what historic status, if any, there is on the building, how the art deco out there, how that fits in with the broader Main Street scheme. There's probably some history that is above and beyond the application before us, but that's certainly something I'm going to have some questions about, is preservation of the art deco, if that's appropriate. The dollar value of the project, it's going to be substantial, it's a very substantial fire. So my question on that is, what's the dollar value of the proposed construction? Does that trigger such things as, yeah, maybe we do have to do some stuff on ADA? Maybe we do have to actually lock down those sidewalks and ramps and what have you? It seems to me there's some potential for upgrades based on, again, it's an older building. Older buildings don't get a pass automatically if you're doing a substantial renovation. Sometimes you're going to trigger some of these other things. And one last question was on the parking in the back. One of those sheds is pretty decrepit, so I don't know that we would have, the one on the northern more side of the parcel, I wouldn't think would be acceptable to keep in there, but I haven't had the chance to inspect it. So, so my basic question is, you know, what, what other things are in here? Again, Commissioner Wicks mentioned landscaping. Normally, we would see a landscaping plan. There may be some need for speed, to get some of these renovations done before the next rains. If we have to bifurcate the project, but I guess if I were to grade this application right now, it'd be kind of incomplete. I'm kind of missing so many informations that we absolutely would want on the sidewalks and the landscaping.
Well, the curbs, gutter, and sidewalks are, yeah, they're there. The concern that our public works had is that some of them are in the state. This is only for the curb gutter and sidewalks along Main Street. There are some concerns by our public works director that those don't have, you know, some of it needs to be replaced, but the city would be working with the, with the applicant to revise some of those sidewalks, the curb gutter and sidewalks. So they didn't draw the plans, but the city would be working, city engineer would be working with the applicant to revise some of those sidewalks, and curbs, and curb gutter pans.
Did he already made the determination sprinklers wouldn't be required? What about fire ladders out back?
It hasn't got, they haven't submitted building plans yet. They're kind of waiting for the, you know, they want to make sure that it's approved.
Regardless of the building's age, you're going to have to have a fire suppression system for a two-story building in State of California.
And I would lead that to our building official to make that determination.
Okay. All right, so just to kind of stay focused on our A and D review. Again, a question about the historical status of the building, if any, kind of the history of the art deco and why that might not be something the applicant wants to maintain in the redesigned project. Don't have to answer those right now.
Yeah, I'll wait till the end.
Yeah. And I have some information historically about the building. So, okay. All right, so we post our general questions. If the applicant's here, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And if there's other interested people here, we'll take your comments, too. It's 5:55, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. If the applicant is here and wishes to come forward and kind of talk a little bit about what they're bringing forward, or if other people want to speak on this project, this would be a good time to do it.
Where do you want me, right here?
Right there.
Okay.
Go ahead, please, take and enter the record.
I'm Doug Bridges. I'm not Jonathan Bridges, that's my son. And honestly, he's been a lot more involved in this than I have, but I do know a little bit about it. Haven't lived 100 yards down the road since the mid-'80s. Our main, really, we weren't ever planning on taking this project on, and basically, the person, the people that owned it, they were in their mid-'70s, they were underinsured, they came back to us and said, "Will you buy this from us?" We don't, we've decided we don't want to put the money in to repair it. We can't afford to repair it, because our repair bill was more than, significantly more than their insurance would take. So that's kind of how we ended up with it, and we turned them down twice, that we didn't want it. We finally came to an agreement on, okay, we'll take it, and take it. So it's currently an escrow, so we're not locked into taking it at this point, but that's, the plan is it. So it kind of ended up in our lap. Since I own Surf Pro, we were there for the cleanup, or for the board up and that portion of it, and then we just ended up having own Bridges Construction, that's how we got into that. Currently, there's, we were there with three police officers yesterday, there's a lot of graffiti going on in the back, there's homeless people breaking in daily, trying to sleep downstairs. A lot of stuff has been stolen that is within the, it's pretty, it's not a good site. So we went back and re-boarded it up again yesterday, trying to keep people out, but it's not going to keep them out for long. So that's a little bit of the, I think, some of the push of getting it done quicker rather than slower. As far as the art deco design portion, in looking at the rest of Main Street, it doesn't really, what we're proposing is much more like the building right next to it, which is the old, I don't know what it's called now, where Jennifer Strong used to be. So that's kind of our plan would be to be like that. It's not really, it's the same design as the main older buildings downtown, like over the, oh, those restaurants we always see that, Gaslight and those kind of ones. So it's different than that, anyway. We just feel like flat roofs are just calling out to be callbacks for contractors. And so that's one of the main things, is we want to, we have a lot more money, and that's really what it is, a lot of it. It's down to, can we afford it, can we not, kind of thing. And so that's part of it, is the, putting a slope drift on, certainly will change the appearance, but will make it much more, much more, it's much more weather-type building and such. So that's a lot of the reason for that. Again, the slope drift versus the repairing what's there, big difference in cost for us to do the slope drift. And we still feel like, because really, I think what it is, is it's, our plan is, our goal is really to target more young families, one or two people, that, first-time apartments in that. It hasn't necessarily been that in the past. It's been a little more of a low-income type housing, and our goal is to make it not quite as much that way. Not that we want to jack up rents, but that we're, we're looking for a little more, a little bit more of a modern look and a little different clientele, maybe, that are in there. So that's kind of our goal for that. You know, I'm just saying, I'm going to read some of his notes. "Overall, the apartment building has gotten a bad name over the years. Our goal is to completely rebrand the building, not as low-income housing, but as a nice downtown apartment complex for families and professionals." Our alternatives are, we could go forward with the purchase, I guess our alternatives are this. If, if we decide it's just too costly for us to, because of, I mean, if, aside from the way we were going to do it, I mean, our proposal, if it says, "No, you got to stick with a flat roof, no, you got to stick with the art deco," which is certainly understandable if that's what you decide, are basically our two alternatives would be, demo it and sell the lot, or step out of escrow and let these people keep it. Our concern is if you let these people keep it, they have no motivation, and I'm like, yes. I mean, unless you really lean on them, it's going to sit there for a long time, until you push enough pressure for them to do something with it. And then I think it would still be ultimately pressuring somebody who would buy it and demolish it and have it, sell it bare ground. So that's kind of where we're at on it. I don't know if that answers everything. Again, if Jonathan was here, he would be able to answer it a lot better, I apologize, but he was, I was appointment, so... Anything from me, from you guys?
Would there be a major change in cost if the art deco elements were retained? Not messing with the roof, we understand that desire, and there'd probably be some incongruity there, but if you were able to get the pitched roof and make it structurally the way you want it, would there be major costs involved, one or the other, with keeping or removing those art deco?
Well, part of the art deco, my understanding, I'm not an expert in the art deco style, but part of my understanding in the art deco style is, I don't know that it would even mesh necessarily with a pitch roof as well as it does with a flat roof. Because the art deco style, a lot of those knobs and things on corners and such, which tend to be more of the flat roof... be more of the flat roof, Spanish style, I don't know, I'm speaking way over my head quite honestly as I'm talking about this.
Okay. But in terms of cost, other than whether we all agree it's a good idea or not, is there a major, other than the pitch roof, say, say you got the pitch roof, any major difference in cost, painting, chipping off the art deco elements if you were to remove them?
Right. I, honestly, I'm not sure. I, I'd have to go back to Jonathan. We haven't really pursued replacing in that as much as just taking that off and redoing the whole outside of the building. So I don't know. I mean, if it was a $5,000 cost to keep the art deco, no problem. If it's a $50,000 cost to keep the art deco, we'd probably snip out. So that's kind of, and so I'd have to find that out. But again, I don't know.
So this deal's kind of on the cutting edge anyway. So is it more of a flip this apartment complex deal, or are you finding?
Our, our plan, at this point, we're really not in the business of being landlords, but our plan would be to get it up and running, get it filled and rented. And then whether we kept it at that, we may find that at that point, we're like, you know, we've lived here 35, 40 years, we'll keep it. Or we may say, we'll, we really haven't thought that through as much. We just know that if it's fully rented and used, it's much more marketable and desirable than just an empty place. So that's kind of where we're at on that.
Questions of the other candidates?
Mr. Chair, real quick, just to add in, just a conversation that staff did have with, with Jonathan in regards to some of those art deco features. We didn't really get much involved into the cost of it, but they're seeing, he did express some difficulty in just being able to, he did some searching around, but some of those features were damaged in the fire and just trying to find replacement pieces was, was kind of his concern on being able, like especially the rosettes and some of the other inset items. It seemed to be there's some difficulty in just trying to be able to locate those.
So that was one of my questions is, and I looked at it, I saw a couple of medallions missing, but what other art deco specific facade features would have to be repaired or replaced? Because a lot of that stuff is inside and we're not looking at an inside project, we're looking at an architectural design review, the exterior of it, pitch roof notwithstanding. So other than that, what other art deco features, whether they be window sills or door frames or whatever, that has those kind of factors?
Honestly, I don't know for sure. Because, yeah. And again, I just, it, my only understanding of the art deco and the pitch roof, they kind of clash, to me, they kind of clash, is, is those, those two kind of, so I mean, to me, if, if you need, if you want the art deco, you need the flat roof. Not for sure. I mean, that's just my first thought on that as I looked at other ones. And again, you don't see a lot of that. Yes, there are flat roofs downtown, but not as much of that art deco style. So I don't think it's a clash. And it's certainly not a clash with a neighbor who's, would be very similar, a little more modernized, so.
And the parking structure in the back, one of them looks pretty beat up.
Yeah, we would have to, I mean, our plan would be, I mean, we don't want to dump a bunch of money into fixing those up, but they got to be, I agree. They, they need some, we'd be open to, you know, them saying, hey, we need this unit repaired or replaced or that, you know, a lot, lot less money to flow into back there that needs to happen to fix it up. So we'd be open to more of that in the back.
I'm not sure if it's lighted in there or, you know, the electrical.
Right. I'm not sure on that. So, and again, now with, with solar street lights and such, and with motion detecting and stuff, we can put some decent lighting in that doesn't cost a lot and works for people, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Anyone, we'll get back to you on this. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this project?
Not speak, but just a question. Are there any plans?
Come on up though. We got to get you on the microphone.
But I can't hear you guys back here either.
Well, I'll speak in the microphone if you will. How about that?
Are there any plans for improvement to the?
Your name, sir?
George Smith.
Thank you.
About a 25 yard distance away, resin. Are there any plans for improvement to the working covered parking or as pavement or anyway, just any improvements in that portion of?
You mean to the, the drive? Because it's gravel.
Well, or, or even to the parking, covered parking.
Structure, yeah. And we asked about that too. All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment on this? Seeing none. Oh, hi, George.
George Spur, citizen over on Port Street. I was just wondering if you could put a fake facade in the front of the building, put up your pitch roof, but take the curvature that's there now and make a fake one and stick that up so it hides the pitch roof. And that way you would still have the design look, but you would also have your pitched roof, which is more efficient. And I don't know how much that would cost, but even the streets, the old buildings on Main Street have a fake front up on the top. So if you could do something like that, it may ease the architectural look of the thing. And then the other thing is if someone has history about this building, it might, if it's interesting history, we might be able to make a plaque up and stick it in front of the place because this building is on the walking path of the city. And that would be a stop that they could read this plaque that says, this building was built in 2729 and, you know, President Roosevelt didn't sleep here. So anyway, those are the kind of things that I'm thinking about. It would be nice to keep that because it is a unique building and it reminds me of 77 Sunset Street. Okay.
So you're liking the art deco?
I like the art deco. And if it's feasible to make a facade front, to make it still the art deco look, keeping the truth.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this? If not, can I drag you back up there real quick? Because that's a valid question. And although you are stuck here and your son is not, going back to the cost.
Right.
And didn't we just do kind of a roof facade thing with the, the old fireside? So such things do exist.
Right.
A roof facade is a major.
On just on the front, you know, if you built some kind of pony type wall that was, that was, that's possibly doable. But my only concern is if that also triggers redoing and keeping all the other art deco on it, then again, I, like I said, I don't know the exact cost. I know we've had trouble even locating a lot of those, those older, you know, those parts and pieces that are missing. But again, I'm not totally aware of how much is missing. And again, I mean, I mean, I understand that it's part of wanting to keep that certain look, but I mean, that part of what we're trying to do is rebrand it. And so if we build it to look exactly the same, I don't know that that, that necessarily appeals to all the clientele that we may be wanting to rent it to. So, I don't know. I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a very concrete answer, but those are kind of some of the stuff we're kicking around with it. So.
Okay. And just speaking out loud, you still need some more information. We may still too.
Understood.
And although the clock is ticking on your escrow, it's a contingent thing, right?
Right. Yeah. I mean, we can hold off on the escrow. I mean, it's, if, if we just tell them we're not sure we're in or not. Or even if we said, we'll go through with the escrow, but we may bulldoze it. So.
Before we go, I have one. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll go. Before you get out, before you run. Yeah. I mean, I understand the appeal of pitched roof.
Right.
There's no doubt that the overhang protects the building, gives it extra protection that you don't have.
Right.
The pitched roof's going to cost more anyways, isn't it?
No.
The pitched roof with the framing isn't, isn't going to cost more than doing the roof as it was?
No. It's going to be significantly less. We can, because there's so much damage, burned damage to that flat roof. There's a huge, and be, what we would, there was so much of it we would have to replace to make it usable, that it's going to cost a lot more than just a trussed pitched roof on.
Do you have a parapet wall on it?
Um.
How tall is the parapet on that?
I, I haven't been on the roof. I've just been under it and in it more. I'm guessing it did have a parapet because you don't necessarily see stuff. I'm sure there's equipment and stuff up there on the roof. And you don't, I don't really remember seeing much of that. So I'm guessing it, there is, you know, much like these buildings in downtown here, I've been on those roofs and where they're waist high wall around. But again.
True. Even a flat roof isn't flat.
Right.
And, you know, and it's pitched. And I know I'm telling you, you already know, but for maybe some of the people in the audience, there is a sentimental value. I mean, I understand that you want to update this, but there's a lot of people that really like that building. I'm included in that. I like it the way that it was. I would love to see it restored back to the way that it was. However, I'm not in a position where I feel like I want to make anybody make a financial decision that's, that's foolish.
Right.
We're just hoping, we want this thing to look good.
Right. Yeah. And we, two things. We want it to look good because whether we keep it, it makes it more rentable, or whether we sell it, it makes it more sellable. So we agree with the, we want it to look good. Like I said, living on North Main Street, growing up there, just, you know, half a block down the road, I've driven by that for years. I, I agree. I like, I liked the look before somewhat, but I don't think it would hurt to modernize it. I mean, again, I, it's, it's, I, I understand what you're saying.
It's, it had a simple beauty to it.
And that, and that's what we find attractive about.
Right. The simplicity of the outside of the building, the simple landscaping, the canopies, the canvas canopies that it had on it. That's, that was the appeal. But I'm not going to argue with what you were, or make you do something that you're not.
And I totally understand that view too. So, and I'm, and I ultimately, I'm good with whatever direction you guys go. Because like I said, we're not locked into it. We're incredibly busy. We're quest anyway. And, you know, so, you know, I mean, I mean, on the one side too, I think too, I mean, if, I mean, because obviously one of the alternatives is an empty lot there, which hopefully then if it was an empty lot, someone would build it, build something else there. But anyway, so we're flexible somewhat. Please.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you, I, we only have one color here. Did you have an idea about what sort of trim color you would put? Or is it all just going to be this copy color? The whole building?
No, we would typically, well, it's, I'm not sure. What does Jonathan put for siding on that place?
There's nothing on it.
Is it, are we going, we're going back with stucco, yes?
Yeah.
I would say if it's, if it's stucco, the only, the only difference in colors would be around the windows portion. And whether that was a tan with a white, we're willing to work with you guys on all of those kinds of things, on, on colors that wouldn't clash. We're not set on any of those things at all.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else to speak on this? I see nobody moving. Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing right around 6:15. Bring it back to the commission for discussion, if possible. I'm going to go back to my original comment. I'm going to grade this incomplete. And one of the things I'm incomplete on in particular is the potential for historical status for this building. I don't know where the age kicks in. I don't know where the uniqueness of the decor kicks in. But if we're going to be discussing bulldozing and stuff like that as an option, that's cool. For any other newer building, that's not even something you worry about. But the rules do change when you have historical standards applied to this. So other than, we can debate in this room and in broader community who likes art deco, who doesn't, I tend to love it. But the, the relevant question is, are we talking about a art and design review of a building where it's free rein and is totally up to our discussion? Or is, do we have to do a little more digging to see exactly where we're at?
One of the challenges of the city of Lakeport is they make reference to significant historical structures, and there's never, ever been any adoption of any type of historic significance of anything in this town.
We haven't deemed any building, a, there's no building in town that's on registered historic places.
Cardigan Library.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah. But, you know, I mean.
Well, I, I think what Dan's getting to is in regards to the program that Commissioner Wick's brought up there. I mean, the, I, I see exactly what you're saying there. I mean, but going up to the previous program, PR 1-10, it talks about the need to adopt the cultural resource management ordinance to identify, recognize, protect and preserve sites, building structures, districts and objects that reflect significant elements of Lakeport's cultural, social, aesthetic and architectural or natural heritage. And then your program kind of rolls into that. And we haven't, we haven't completed that first one really to be able to analyze the second one. However, it's still a, it's still a feature of the general plan that needs to be taken into consideration approval. But as far as written criteria to analyze a building's historical significance, we don't, we don't have that beyond, you know, what's been already deemed historical through the National Register of Design.
I don't look at it more as a historical building. It's, it's an old building, but in, in speaking with family members and getting some background on it, it seemed that the consensus was, including Laura Hodgkinson, who is Laura Cubby Hodgkinson, her father worked on the building. The whole art deco thing, when it hit, happened in various places around Lake County. And because Lakeport itself had a core look, it was an attempt to modernize the town, to bring in the trade that was up on Cobb Mountain from the Bay Area and various places that were still sort of using the area as a recreation. And so various places around the lake became art deco-ish, right? Like Clear Lake Lodge and so on and so forth. And so Lakeport had its art deco. That's why you got palm trees near it, so on and so forth. So there was an attempt made, at least at that point in the late twenties, to get it done. So I'm not really hung up on the whole historical thing. I was interested though, in, in doing an informal survey, about 26 people. I asked them if they wanted to keep it, if they didn't want it modernized, or if they didn't care. I had 18 people who wanted to keep it, three who wanted to modernize it, and three who just really didn't have an opinion on it one way or the other. They all thought it was a shame that it, it had damage to it, but they were all hoping that maybe it would in some important way come back to the way it used to be because they, they liked that look. So I can only report what the citizens tell me. I have no personal opinion on it, of course. But so I ask these questions because there is, there is some interest in keeping art deco. And I think that's why I was asking the questions about the actual features of it. Because I saw a couple of medallions missing, but I didn't see anything else art deco related that was gone other than the canopies which could be replaced. So I'm a little, you know, I was more interested in what really needed to be repaired as, as opposed to, you know, skinning it and making it look modern.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, I mean, you, you can see in the elevations that beyond just the roof pitch and the loss of that roof line, I mean, that the applicant is, it doesn't look like they're proposing any changes to, you know, the insets or to window sizing or things like that, other than, you know, they did, did mention the fact that the, you know, that some of those rosettes and inset pieces that were damaged are difficult to find. I mean, that was the only other thing. The other thing that I think is probably important to add into the conversation, I think that survey's great. But on the same token, one of the things that was expressed to us by the applicant directly was that part of the reason for changing the architectural style here was because that structure has not had the greatest reputation over the past several years, that this was kind of a, a reset of, you know, showing that it was something new and something maybe more desirable than the, the reputation that it kind of has suffered the past several years. Not here to argue that validity at that point, but I just wanted to kind of set that into record.
And one of the challenges that we've kind of faced is that, you know, basically the current owners are out of the picture. They're not going to do anything for this. And, you know, if it falls out of escrow, what we don't want is an abandoned building in, that's half burnt in Lakeport. That's, that was the concern why we left this forward.
I mean, we do have tools to deal with that, but I'm not going to lie to you that the, the tools are difficult, you know, in, you know, in a governed agency to, you know, to put pressure on property and, you know, go through that process. It's not impossible. Certainly something that, you know, if it continued to remain a derelict building that's attracting, becoming a larger and larger attractive nuisance, we would have to look at that. But it would be significant cost to see. So I mean, as Dan was saying, that was one of our causes in there. But I mean, we, I would prefer to see the art deco retained as well. But at the same time, I also, I've worked very hard the past five years to get new housing built. And I'm, you know, it, it does, it weighs heavily on my mind that, you know, I potentially could see the loss of 14 units for quite a long time as well. So this is a, it's, it's a tough one. I mean, I can, I can see it from both sides. So I think the discussion's been really good thus far, so. So, sorry you guys had a difficult decision on your hands.
Despite the vagueness in our own ordinance, seems to me the most relevant part of the discussion right now is the historical element of the California Building Code. And so, I don't have any information in the staff report. My guess is you can only go down that road in terms of your analysis. But if we're thinking it's at least a hundred-year-old building, if it is at least unique enough, that we have people in the audience, informal survey, I would say definitely, again, we're all going to have an opinion. But there's generally, it, it was a landmark building. Certainly it got a lot of attention when it did burn. And one of the reasons it didn't get so much attention is because of its landmark status. A good, bad, or indifferent. And in terms of rebranding, if it has a bad element and if they could have watered the trees back then. I mean, you know, it isn't just the art deco that brought the bad element in there. So, I think there's more than one way to rebrand it. But in terms of due diligence and us making an informed decision, we don't know what we don't know yet. And if we haven't gone down that particular route, and again, I'm not trying to kick anyone out of escrow. I'm not trying to add expense to anyone's project. But if in fact it is a historical building as determined under the building code, whether or not it's going to end up on the historical register or not, that's a whole different process. But is it a historical building? And if so, do the historical building standards apply? And if so, would we have a little more information in the staff report that we could then make a more informed decision about whether retaining architectural elements or, or do something else? But knowing, other than the fact we know it's a hundred-year-old building that got cutted by fire, we don't know what we don't know in terms of its historical status or lack thereof.
Just one clarification here. You're referring to the California Historic Building Code. That doesn't regulate anything about historic structures. What it regulates is how you could rebuild those structures. How, it gives basically builders some specific, what is it? Wiggle room for getting out of the modern building codes for older buildings. So, it does nothing to do with...
So, it might be about redoing the parking shed in the back, but it wouldn't get them out of necessarily nuking the art deco facade?
Well, the Historic Building Code, just difference how the building is built and how you do the reconstruction. And it does waive some requirements that are required in new construction, only because it makes it impossible to incorporate some of those newer building codes into it. So, that, I mean, I think we just need to walk away from the building, historic building codes right now. Because it has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight.
You're saying they're subtractive instead of additive? There's nothing in the Historical Building Code that would give us the ability to weigh the importance of the art deco and give us a metric on whether to retain or not?
Well, not the state. I mean, the city, it, basically, it's up to you probably. Since we don't have any determination in the city, it would be up to the planning commission to make a determination that this building has a significant historical value. And then if that's the case, then there's a whole process we'd have to go through.
Well, I'm saying we don't even know. We don't have the data to even tell you one way or the other.
Because I think that also speaks back to Program 110B. I mean, it's, any building over 45 years should have somebody of record at least look at it. It doesn't have to be a historical building. It's an old building. But maybe, you know, it could be an old building that doesn't mean anything. But if it's an old building that has some sort of sentimental value or some sort of, you know, attachment to people, then maybe it does. We don't know. So...
Well, I mean, yeah. And, whatever. Nevermind.
I mean, you know, I, I think, you know, for this, for this particular site, I think that's definitely a valuable piece. I just want to think through the precedent that that sets too. Because when you start thinking of buildings that are over 45 years old in the city, you start...
It's not a precedent, it's a program that's in the general plan. So, if you don't want it in the general plan, then we should probably do something to relocate or alter it. But it's there.
It's a program that's contingent upon, you know, developing these standards first.
Well, so, you know, cart and horse kind of thing, you know?
What a great, what a great excuse to do that. Well, I mean, there may be some direction there.
Although it's on as an action item, we're not bound to take action. If we ended up tabling it and bringing it back in a couple of weeks, would we have the ability? Hey, we have a special meeting coming up in two weeks.
Well, I guess my question would be, are you tabling or are you, are you deeming it that it's not complete and that it needs to...
I would rather, oh...
No, you don't want to table it.
I don't table it because I won't get any new information.
It'll be done, it'll be done at the table. It won't be that.
Well, then how do I, if we reject it and I, it'll be without prejudice?
You don't reject it. You just continue the conversation forward to the special meeting or the next available.
If I don't table it, I continue it?
We continue it with direct requests.
Yeah, with specific questions like we, sometimes, you know, questions for staff, we need more information. One of those questions, they come back to them.
And then Robert Chulow, is that the chair dealer? Is that the consensus of the commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
No, I, I think it would need to be something that... Well, yeah, well, tonight it's going to...
Well, tonight it gets action. Do it, it'd be also like an action of like pulling an action.
As required.
Right, it's the same thing. Hey, we need to...
Well, you're using one word.
Yeah, I'm inclined to continue this to a date certain.
Yes. I would be there to gather a little more information. I think it's in the applicant's best interest if you try it.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's, you know, this is a good project and it, and it's got a lot of value. I just want to make sure that everyone gets, you know, aware of what's happening. And, you know, if they want to keep it, they keep it. If they don't, they don't. But I, I have to agree. I, I wouldn't call it necessarily a completely incomplete A and D. It's missing a few things, but I, I would agree.
So, but if we continue it to a date uncertain, we would want to know more about the historical standards or lack of...
We would need a specific information you would request at that time.
I, well, I, I think of...
And then what standards, if any, our local ordinance or program would come to bear related to those historical...
My, my, hold on here one second. Give me a second. Before, before we do that, I wanted to go back to, because there was some other discussion earlier about, you know, in regards to the lack of the landscape plan. I mean, is that something that you guys would be requesting to review prior to any approval as well?
This is a pretty small one. Hopefully that could be done.
Well, you also have the, the back of the property as well, that's got trees in it, that probably should need to be cleaned up or redone or what have you. I mean, and looking at the property in total, if you're going to do a remodel on it, regardless of whether it gets done now, if the plans show these future attempts to put in landscaping and cover parking or whatever it may be, that'd be nice to see just the preliminary. Here's our idea of what we want to do. And that gives us a better, you know, better picture of what we're, we're trying to get done here.
You could even phase it, you know, the, the construction and the back. So, landscaping and then the one parking shed, if not both, but one of them.
Well, I mean, the, the parking...
Parking would remain, basically, my discussion with the applicant, the, the parking would be, remain the same as it is.
Right, but spaces...
I think that that might be more appropriate action for a condition as far, I don't know that you necessarily would need, I mean...
Well, I don't know that it stays. To me, it looks pretty decrepit.
It's been that way ever since I was a kid. It really has.
It's historical.
It's, it's, there's been, there's been for gated tin on that thing forever.
It, it, if it, it doesn't look sound to me. I just think it's sound. But I, it's a question. If we're going to come back anyway, let's, let's...
Well, I would defer that to the building inspector and the contractor. Well, I mean, that's, and you can provide, we can have... Okay, so, I think at this time, you know, it's, I think it would be difficult to continue it to a date time uncertain because a lot of this would be dependent on getting information back from the applicant consistent with these things. So, I think what, anticipating what the planning commission is doing here, that we would, you would be looking to make a motion to continue this project to an additional date. And it would be need to be re-advertized and, and notice to address some additional historical analysis consistent with general plan policy PR 1.10. Specifically in regards to Program PR 1.10-B. The need for a landscape plan, the need to analyze a landscape plan for the site. And then some additional analysis on the structural integrity of the, some of the parking sheds in the rear.
And the city of Lakeport will be the ones who are, go out and try to find architect or historian.
I don't necessarily need an historian, you just need somebody who's architecturally, an architect will probably do that.
We need a historian. They haven't. John Walker would be like...
No, that's right. We've got resources.
Yeah, we'll work.
Best estimate on, we could go totally uncertain or if we want to give some certainty to the applicant so he can get back on it. It's kind of fielder's choice. We'll give you as much time as you want unless the applicant wants to take...
One is, one is we continue this to a specific date, then we don't have to do noticing. The other is we just continue it and then we do noticing.
You could do a specific date and if it's not ready, we would, you know, you can open the public hearing and, you know, state as such. My only concern, you, from the applicant in talking with Jonathan Bridges, which didn't seem as big of a concern this evening when, when Duck Bridges was talking, was it seemed that, I mean, we, we really pushed this forward on, based off of Jonathan's comments, that this was a decision they needed to make now. So, I mean, there, there's a potential that it, it won't go further, I mean, depending on how they do it. But I mean, I think this is all information that's need to discuss. But I mean, that's, that's also a possibility too, is that you would continue it to a date time uncertain and the applicant may pull the project. But that doesn't...
You wouldn't have to re-advertise it?
We wouldn't have to re-advertise in there. I mean, they would, they would withdraw their project. So, that's just, that's another option that may be at play. But I mean, you could do a date time uncertain, but then if we're not able to complete that... And I would imagine, given the discussions with the applicant before, that if they were looking, if they want to go forward with this project, that they'd be looking at doing that pretty quickly because that was kind of factoring into their, their economics for, for the project. So, you could put it as a date time uncertain. I do not believe moving it to the special hearing on the 28th is going to be, is not going to be...
September? First one is September?
It's 30 days.
September 15th is it?
11th.
11th? And it could potentially work?
Otherwise, again, if you've got other things, I don't want to hand tie you, but I don't want to stretch it out into necessarily October. And we could have a special meeting on the...
From our side, we would be ready in, in the special meeting in two weeks. I don't know about your side.
Well, I think, I think we can make an answer. Well, the, the challenge would be, I mean, we could do it, but you, this would be the staffy part we use because we don't have time to produce about that.
What I think really looking for here is just a determination as to whether or not the art deco or not is applicable. That's, I think that's what it's going down to. There's no question as to the structure and that kind of thing. It's whether it's the actual image of the building that people are concerned, but...
Well, it's conducting the historical analysis. I mean, you're going to need to bring on a professional to do that. And I haven't done that in a long time as, as far as a, you know, you know, an architectural historian. However, we can base it off of, you know, what we typically do in regards to cultural resources. And that's typically a process that takes a month or two to conduct, so...
All right, I don't want to tie your hands. So, the, the motion to continue it to a date uncertain would come in what form?
You, you could do it that way or you can put it, I mean, you could make it, set it to the date time certain of September. And if it's not ready, we'll come back and tell you, you know, request you to continue it again.
Let's do that. Just because I think we do have some local resources that probably would bang it out pretty quick. I'm hopeful, anyway.
But I don't think we have any registered, I guess, well... Yeah.
Well, let's see. And if it ain't ready, it ain't ready. We'll push it back. We're going to meet you halfway. Then if there's consensus to continue this matter to a date and time certain, which would be the next regular meeting of the planning commission on September 11th? Yes, okay, that's our consensus.
Based on the stated findings of...
Based on the stated findings, which you have a nice little laundry list.
I do.
All right, cool. Thank you all for coming. If that's your item, we have an update item coming up next on the agenda. And we'll, we'll see what happens then. Our next agenda item B. Anyone need a break?
I'm good.
All good? We're just going to follow through. All right, our next agenda item is B. City of Lakeport, 11th Street Corridor. That's OA 19-01. We're just receiving an update on the 11th Street Corridor project. And I don't think we're going in detail on the initial study. Staff?
Yeah, give me one second to get this bad boy running. Can you hit the two?
I have them flagged with the green flags.
I guess. Creative? It only took us two years.
This is in an effort, you know, as we discussed in, you know, there was some interest by the planning commission in the past couple of meetings to maybe start diving in a little bit more detail into some of the ongoing city projects, more so than we do in our general updates of just a minute or two. And we started last time, our last regular meeting. We did just kind of an overview of the, the ongoing parks grant, which I'll just say quickly. We did give that grant off to the state per its deadline. So, please keep your fingers crossed. We should know in regards to that in December of this year. But I figured the next more timely one that needed some attention would be this 11th Street Corridor Study Project. Specifically because of the art, we do have some ongoing outreach in it. There's no action that's being requested of the planning commission this evening. This is simply kind of an overview of the project, where it is currently, and what the next steps would be. So, please, don't hesitate to interrupt me. If you have questions along the way, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions from the public as we go through. But like I said, just more of an informational presentation at this point. Maybe. There we go. So, a quick project overview. This was a, needless to say, I mean, we've, you've heard it. Our, of the city council has received many complaints on it in the past. It's definitely an item that comes up very regularly with our traffic safety advisory committee having to do with mainly, you know, vehicle movements and pedestrian safety along the entire 11th Street Corridor. But if I could break that down more specifically, I think the area of greatest concern is where 11th Street narrows down from Pool Street to Main Street. So, the, the purpose of the project is to analyze various alternatives to improving all facets of transportation along this corridor. Pedestrian, bicycle, vehicular, and public transit. Examine costs related to various alternatives. Develop those alternatives with bicycle and pedestrian focus in mind. And then ultimately, the final product would be the creation of a project study report. That project study report is very vital in being able to pursue additional funding options for any eventual construction of, of project improvements. The project objection, objective, not objection, sorry, is to focus on the utilization of existing right-of-way where possible, especially in that section there between Pool and Main Street. The houses sit very close to those property lines. I mean, so we want to improve the existing facilities there, but we're also very mindful that acquiring additional right-of-way in that area is going to be a very difficult and painful process if that's the direction that we need to go. Provide multimodal access through the corridor from Highway 22 Main Street. Improve pedestrian bicycle access, mainly focusing, looking at safer crossings. And obstruction removal would be mainly the power poles that sit right in the middle of the very narrow sidewalks. And the fact that there are large gaps in sidewalks along that entire corridor as well. On an off note, it's important to note that the city council yesterday evening gave direction to staff to move forward with the establishment of a underground utilities district, which included the 11th Street Corridor as well, some areas along North Main Street. One of the options looking at is providing a bicycle route that may utilize 10th Street. Maybe that may be an appropriate alternative rather than trying to establish a bike route directly on 11th Street. And then improve access to public transit, as I said. The project area is not just 11th Street. It does stretch to the north there along Clear Lake Avenue. It stretches from the... It stretches from the highway all the way to Main Street. And then its southern boundary goes all the way down to 7th Street. That's mainly, you know, kind of trying to focus on acknowledging that putting a bike lane specifically on 11th Street may be difficult, and to kind of look at the status of those other roadways as potential opportunities for creating a bike route.
What does that say?
Put away your backpack.
Oh, that must be a leftover from the quick thing that I, I used a teacher slide thing. I happen to be married to one, so. My apologies. It was the first day of school yesterday.
One to merit.
I'm found out.
But as an aside, now that I pointed that out, I don't know the history, but at some point, we were, there was a decision made that 11th was to, and Clear Lake kind of became that one-way thing with the stop sign. It's both point we all turned, but the street itself is wider and.
11th Street was a orchard, and back in the seventies, a group of guys got together and said, hey, let's build a shopping center near this orchard. And so, 11th Street wasn't ever designed to be a archery. It was just a road that went out of Scott Valley.
Correct, yeah, and you're right. Clear Lake Avenue was much wider, but at the same time, the, yeah, Clear Lake Avenue presents a number of topography issues as well. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a really tough.
But in a right's-a-way, you know, I'm thinking that would be much better.
It is much wider, for sure.
I guess my initial question, just talking off the side of my head, is we focus just on the street, or we just look at east-west connectivity, which is really the issue? And is, have we ruled out Clear Lake Avenue in any way, shape, or form to be a part of that city?
I think the answer to all those questions is yes. I mean, so, no, I mean, Clear Lake Avenue is in the study area, so it would be considered as part of an alternative, you know, strategy. But the focus is mainly on 11th Street. But if the way to improve 11th Street is to look at some of the surrounding streets to take on, you know, some of those modes, then that's, that's under consideration.
And there's no feedback from the public that they're part of this, and they're still working on.
What a great segue, Dan.
But if the assumption was, we're just gonna pound something down 11th, just because the Clear Lake people want to battle like twenty, thirty years ago, what was the battle?
I don't know that there was a.
Before anyone's time?
I don't know there was a battle.
I don't think the original street design, why it goes all the way down to the lake, was that it was the natural progression to move north from the towns to the south, because the south flooded. And elevation was higher on the north end, and so the development of Lakeport went this way instead of that way.
I would, I would, yeah, agree on that. I think, you know, the change feature there is you gotta remember that grid of the original town plan that included Clear Lake Avenue existed prior to the freeway going in. I mean, the highway used to be Main Street up Clear Lake Avenue, and then up High Street, Mount Lake Shore. That when the decision, I think that really kind of solidified it was even the decision to put the on-ramp there at 11th Street versus, you know, maybe looking at some of the other places. And that kind of really solidified 11th Street as the primary corridor, even though it may not have been the best suited for it. In regards to public outreach, that was a huge component. When we were putting together the grant application, we built in a lot of facets for public outreach. And that's for the entire community, but mainly focused on, we've had a very direct outreach to the individuals that live specifically on that 11th Street corridor. Like I said, I mean, any, any potential improvements, especially any improvements that would require right-of-way, your purchase of right-of-way, or construction of additional improvements, is gonna have a very direct effect on anybody living on that corridor. I mean, many of the people's front porches already sit just feet from the back of the sidewalk. And so, looking at any potential improvements that there, that's gonna be a serious impact on those. So, we knew right from the get-go that this project was gonna need to have a very large public outreach component with a huge focus on residents that live directly in that area. This is kind of a snapshot or a screenshot of the program that the consultant put together. It's an interactive map they sent out, and there's an online survey that was up for approximately three weeks. I think it just ended on the sixth, although you can still go to it. And put in your additional input, put down pinpoints. This one. You can, if you click on any of these specific points, there's an opportunity to write in some dialogue. And if you, if this was a live link, you could click on those and see that some of those are making recommendations for improvements to crossings, or maybe making a recommendation that this is not an appropriate spot for a crosswalk, or this is so. I mean, it was an interactive process that we've used on a couple of other projects, and it seems to garner some better feedback in some, than maybe just a dry, than a dry survey would. There was outreach, this survey link was sent directly to everybody that lived in that corridor. And then in addition to the online survey, they've been doing some great public outreach, just at different events. They were, they had a booth here at the most recent National Night Out event last week, and it's my understanding they did get some great feedback related to that.
Yeah, I was pretty amazed. It filled up the whole map.
This is, I knew that you weren't gonna be able to see this. This is, this is kind of a breakdown of some of the possible alternatives that are under consideration. And, I mean, really, the other focus in addition to the large public outreach is we wanted to analyze a number of different alternatives, if, if for at least the minimum perspective, to rule one out. Just as being uncost, you know, not cost productive or things like that. So, I mean, you'll see, well, you can't see, but some of the alternatives talk about putting improvements in the existing right-of-way. Some include expanding the right-of-way and purchasing additional right-of-way. Others talk about, you know, the potential of creating a couplet system, where you may have one-way traffic, one way or another. You know, maybe utilizing Clear Lake Avenue. Others talking about, I think, when we went to the Traffic Safety and Advisory Committee, their preferred alternative was moving the bike lane down to 10th Street and providing a center turn line to help, turn lane to help the flow of traffic, and then improving sidewalk at a minimum on one side continuously, you know, getting around the existing barriers and providing that area, so that you're kind of improving vehicular flow, while at the same time also improving pedestrian access as well. So, basically, the purpose here is not to go through each of the alternatives, but just to demonstrate that there are several alternatives that are under consideration. And at this point, the consultants are crunching all the data that they've received through the survey to identify more appropriate alternatives if they exist as well. This was, you know, like I said, one of the main project objectives was trying to fit improvements into the existing right-of-way. So, this, this particular design shows what could be possible within the existing right-of-way. This shows two eleven-foot drivelines, five-foot bike lanes, and only, I think it's six and a half side, six and a half foot sidewalks. The, the sort of hard part with this one is this isn't taking into account the expense needed in undergrounding all those utilities or relocating them in order to make those sidewalks feasible. But it does demonstrate that there are options available within the existing right-of-way.
And isn't the existing right-of-way thirty-two feet as it stands right now without purchase?
It varies. It varies, and it's.
At the widest point, or at the, according to Doug, it was the minimum.
Correct. And the other, the other piece to kind of keep in mind too is some segments of that roadway are only prescriptive easement. So, the main thing to note there between prescriptive easement and the right-of-way would be if we did need to purchase more right-of-way, not only would we need to purchase, say, the additional two or three feet, we'd also need to purchase all the way to the center of the line of the road, because we don't own that as well. So, that makes those sort of projects a lot more costly. Timeline and next steps. As I noted, the, there's been a tremendous amount of public outreach thus far. That flyer there on the right kind of shows some of their advertisement. But this really started as an effort culminating through, you know, just going through the number of complaints and issues that we were receiving on this section of the corridor. The Traffic Safety and Advisory Committee spent a great deal of their, their time in 2017 looking at this, and that kind of helped staff solidify its, its view when, when the SB 1 was approved. There was several rounds of funding that came into play, and we decided to go for it. And with the help of Lake APC, we submitted and were awarded a Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant in spring of 2018. Upon review of appropriate consultants, Lake APC and the city selected W Trans with the assistance of ILG, who do, who are doing the public outreach to conduct the project. They began the project in January of this year. We had a needs and a problem identification outreach meeting, and I couldn't for the life of me find the date when that was. I think that was, Ken, you were there as well, and I know the Jones.
Yeah, it was, I don't have it on me, but it was.
A couple of months ago in this room.
Yeah, six, six weeks, seven weeks ago.
Okay. And then based on that, the, the purpose of that was trying to identify the needs and problems for that study area that helped kind of create this interactive map. And like I said, the past couple of months have been focused on trying to get the community engaged, which we've, I think they've done really well in getting some features in. Which brings us to the next phase that's going on as we speak, which is the development of project alternatives. Those alternatives will be drawn up, and we'll host another public meeting, probably in later this summer or early this fall, to gather additional input to help them create the final product, as I said, is a project study report, probably with the identification of a preferred alternative that would allow us to look for additional funding opportunities to move forward with engineering, and then ultimately, construction. I was very honest with TSAC at the beginning of this problem, but with, with the problem identification, that this is not something that's gonna be solved overnight. This is a multi-step process, but this is a very important first step, this project. So, I think it's great. I'm very excited about the amount of, I mean, we've had great public outreach for parks in our lakefront plan, but when you get into some of these other maybe more, you know, less exciting. Park, designing parks is really fun, you know. Designing roadways is a little less fun. But I was very, it was, it was great seeing the amount of turnout and the amount of participation that we're getting. I mean, I think that speaks volumes to the existing problems and what needs to be solved for this corridor. Huge economic corridor, lots of folks utilize it, not just the residents. I mean, it's a main thoroughfare, and it's a linkage to the north-south connectors in the city. It's a vital corridor, not just for the city, but for the region as well. So, that's it, just kind of a quick overview. I mean, and we'll certainly be continuing to put information, once there's a date for our next public hearing. We'll put that out on the website. We'll make direct contact with the folks that live in the, in the project area and do a lot of outreach on our social media, Facebook pages, and, you know, the police Facebook page has a huge view. They put the city page to shame, so we'll do, we'll, we'll continue to do those efforts.
Will the utility district?
Hold on a second. Does that conclude the presentation?
That's it.
All right. Love to hear your question. If you can come up and speak it in the microphone, we appreciate it for the record.
Stan Jones. My question is, the utility district that you just formed, or in the process thereof, will they be working in conjunction with the 11th Street Corridor project? Mainly have their underground system ready to go, rather than put in the corridor, or put in the new roadways, like they did on Main Street several years ago, and then go down after it's all nice and purty, and dig the trenches to put everything underground? Can they work together on this thing?
They're, they're complementary, but in reality, the, the formation of the underground utility district is for the use of what's called rural 20A monies. And currently, I, I don't know the specific numbers, but we have just over, I believe, a million dollars in, in rural 20A money for undergrounding utilities. And this is probably a ten or twelve, you know, million-dollar project to underground those things. And, I mean, we've been saving that rural 20A money, which comes as PG&E credits for over, oh, at least a decade. So, in all likelihood, that, that rural 20A money is gonna pay for the undergrounding all by itself. It's not likely.
No.
But that doesn't mean that there aren't other funding opportunities that are available that we can help leverage some of that existing money to do. So, it'd be my hope that, once we got the project study report, that we'd be able to pursue some Caltrans, additional Caltrans and SB 1-related funding types. And we could use our existing rural 20A money as kind of a match to maybe make those grants more competitive. But if we were to depend completely on the underground district and the rural 20A money, we're decades out.
Or, I mean, they, they can work together.
They can, absolutely. Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Any comments from commissioners? A real quick question. I know two weeks from now we're doing the initial study, which I will read in great detail, but haven't yet. So, I wonder how that came in, if we haven't even identified all the project alternatives yet, the scope of the initial study.
Oh, the initial study that's on the special agenda is for a completely separate project. That's the Hartley Active Transportation Project. You know, this.
It is, it starts with 20th Street.
Oh, yeah, I read it. Okay. All right, thank you.
It's a good thing you said that first.
Well, but did you guys get your copies? I am gonna read it.
Where's, where's the general plan? Does it speak, I'm drawing a blank to the 11th Street Corridor.
Oh, we just, well, it's in one of the elements we analyzed.
Yeah, I read it. Now I can't find it, but.
In, I mean, my first guess is transportation, but we haven't reviewed transportation.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I, I think it's in the economic development one, talking about.
I'm gonna find it. I know I read it.
Oh, no, it's probably in the community design element, honestly. Talking about.
Busters. Sidewalk improvements or potential.
Yeah, pedestrian and bicycle access, policy CD 2.1. I mean, it's, it's several.
There was, yeah, there was one.
But there is one, there are specific areas that talk directly about improvements necessary to the 11th Street Corridor. Another, another piece that we looked at, and one of the reasons we extended this all the, all the way up to the highway as well, was the idea of kind of help facilitating the fact that this is a gateway to the city. You know, one of the eventual hopes is that to get some additional north-south connection in the city through, perhaps, you know, places like Alden or areas like that, trying to provide some more through act, through access, not only to facilitate future development, but to, as we've noted in our recent fires, that the current circulation through those areas is difficult when you need to evacuate quickly with only one way in, traversing all the way back down the high street or things like that. The additional access is important to those areas. So, I mean, they, all these pieces come together. I mean, that's why 11th Street is so important, because it's, although there are some issues with the direct corridor itself, its importance really relates to, that's the lifeline, you know, to the entire north section of the city. And north, I, I joke with, with my wife all the time, that, you know, we live in Kelseyville. I can get from Kelseyville to City Hall quicker than I can get from City Hall to the schools up on the north end half the time, because of the, you know, kind of the strangeness of, of the north-south connection to the city. So, I mean, that all kind of leads back to this area. This is a dissolution to everything, but it's a, it's a big component.
Going back to the map, you said a lot of it ties to the way to the on-ramp, I don't know if you're gonna bring it up, but it looked like Clear Lake kind of brought up, you know, if there was a will, there'd be a way to tie into that interchange and get a couplet going or something. It's part of the discussion. So, one of the project alternatives will be the couplet and the employ of Clear Lake and 11th.
If, yeah, I mean, and that's, and this is, you know, the purpose is not just to identify a preferred alternative. It's to kind of look at various alternatives, and that would be one of them. I mean, for instance, if, you know, one option. I mean, for instance, if, you know, one option, if money was no object is, and topography was doable, I mean, to reutilize the fact that there is additional right-of-way up there, you could potentially reroute the corridor around the residential neighborhood through Useculic Avenue. However, that's very challenged because you have to purchase several properties there along the section of the 11th Street area and deal with topography. But yeah, I mean, that's, that's, those are the kind of questions that are supposed to be looked at and answered, even if they're just to say, you know, this just really isn't a feasible alternative, at least we can point to that it was examined.
And even though the focus is on 11th Street, if we do have some site issues on Clearlake Avenue, that it's basically a roundabout that covers four city blocks, but where, you know, High Street kind of curves around and all that, and so I know that's not technically 11th Street Corridor.
It is in the project area though.
So we can, we can take a look at all of that, okay.
I actually had a spirited conversation with a resident who wanted to open up the one-way streets to four-way streets like they used to be. And as well, there's a reason why there's a dotted line on the corner there going up High Street, because trucks have to use that intersection, you know, more of the Clearlake Avenue and High Street meets, there's like, it's all blocked off, right? Um, they want that opened up because they didn't understand why during lunchtime and dinner rush, why they couldn't just head west up the avenue straight from Main Street, just head west and bypass all the nonsense. Uh, can't do it, but, uh, yeah.
You mean trucks would eventually get stuck down there by?
Well, well, the, the traffic study alone for that intersection with any sort of signaling would be impossible because once you open it up to truck traffic, I think that's why it got shut down originally, because if trucks wanna turn to go west, they can't because it's a business, it's a truck route, but cars who wanna use it have to stop and leave for these, you know, 60 footers to swing wide and come around, and so it's just, it's just a big mess. And after that was Business 29, um, like, like Kevin said, that used to be the highway that was right through Lakeport when they made this bypass. So it's not ideal, anyway, what you have.
It's hard, it's a very hardcore.
Uh, so it'll be coming back, something will be coming back to us in a couple of months for a public hearing, a lot of the public meetings.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know that, that there'll be some additional public outreach meetings, um, but I mean, this study itself, um, wouldn't come to the planning commission for review. However, you know, any future project that comes about it, certainly, you know, the environmental documents, very similar to what you're gonna be reviewing for the Hartley, uh, Safe Off the School ATP project next week, would, would come to this planning commission.
But it'd also be mentioned in the capital improvement report. If, if it was on schedule, if 11th Street Corridor actually got action, it would be included in the CIP for the annual report.
Yes, if it, if, if we're able to obtain funding.
Right.
Then, then I think it would, it would move itself up higher on the, the CIP.
Right, then we did read it at that point, okay.
But more like the next stop of the city council.
Yeah, this, this particular.
The report, whatever it becomes.
This particular, um, I think that the track route where it would go is, um, it would ultimately be reviewed by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, um, with, um, with an approval, uh, to the city council.
Questions or comments, Mr. Foyle?
No, I, I don't have any questions or comment other than I'm, I really appreciate this. I appreciate seeing what's going on, you know, outside of the planning commission, what we're doing. It's, it's great to be able to, to be able to talk about it and, uh, when we're not here. The information's good to have, thank you.
We'll, we'll continue this up. I don't know, I'll, I'll take a look and see the timeliness of some of the other projects and, um, so we'll, we'll continue to maybe showcase the project at our regular meeting. I don't think we'll be able to get one on the 28th, but at our next regular meeting, we'll try and showcase another project as well.
Appreciate the update. Uh, that includes our two regular calendar items, moving on to correspondence. Uh, we have a little list. There's Hartley Street, so we'll be talking about that at our special meeting in two weeks.
That's correct.
I read a lot of reports, so I'm sorry. Um, so this says we're gonna be talking more about 11th Street. That's what we did today, right?
One of the ongoing projects.
Okay. Uh, do you? Oh, Amerit is one of the things we're doing on the 28th?
Yes, we're working on it.
No, it'd probably be on the 28th.
No, but there was another, uh, the reason we said it in the first place, it wasn't Amerit, it was.
It was for Hartley, the Hartley.
Well, it's for, yeah, the initial study.
It has a certain specific timing for the, uh, the environmental review that has to take place at.
We need, we need to complete the environmental review in order to, um, request the next phase of funding, uh, through the California Transportation Commission.
I apologize, I didn't read it, but I did notice it was outsourced, so is that something we would typically do in-house?
No, I mean, for those large capital improvement projects, um, it's weird.
Any questions on correspondence, real list of projects? We're still reading on a candidate permanent.
Yeah, we have an incomplete letter out on that one. Um, we've reached out a couple of times to the applicant and had some discussions about the items that are necessary to bring that application forward, but we haven't received them as of yet, so I don't know that we have a, um, a time schedule for that one, which is a new for you.
And we lost our lieutenant that handled, uh, as though we're kind of working with a new, uh, acting lieutenant.
Who's the acting lieutenant now?
Jerry Gonzalez, he's a former, um, Willis Police Chief.
He's the mayor also.
Oh, he's the mayor.
He was the mayor, yeah. Yeah, he's currently the mayor, that's right.
But where?
Willis.
Okay, anything else on correspondence? Seeing that, let's move on to, almost there, Linda, uh, convention staff or commissioner, go start with staff.
Um, I think I already kind of pulled the thunder out there before. I, I stated that, um, we did get, I think, our biggest piece. Uh, we've had a couple of big items that have finally moved to additional phases. The first being the park grant, um, had an August 5 deadline. Uh, we diligently got that piece together and, uh, out the door and, uh, into the grant reviewer's hands, so we should know in December, um, you know, that whether or not we receive that grant. I, I think I stated in our project update last time that this certainly is not our last opportunity, uh, for funding, um, under the Prop 68 funding source. However, it certainly is probably one of our best options, uh, because it is geared so heavily to, um, disadvantaged communities which we qualify. Um, the other piece was, uh, yesterday evening, um, the city council did adopt a resolution and approve the environmental documentation, um, for the, um, the annexation, call this meeting to order. Uh, Nick, will you listen to the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, could we please have the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Tina.
Does that mean?
Yes. Here. Councilmember Farlet.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Barnes.
Present. I just like to shake things up a little bit, you know? All right, acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any urgency items?
Don't we got?
Mr. Ray, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Sorry? I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Ordinances, waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage. Minutes, approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of August 20th, 2019. Approve the warrant register of August 23rd, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the Mendocino complex fire. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Approve event application, 2019 dash 025 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Clearlake High School homecoming parade. Would council like to pull any of these items? Anyone from the public? Bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept consent agenda.
Second. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Okay, public input, do we have any, I know we have at least one, the public input board. Frank Deloso, come on up.
Evening, everyone. Frank Deloso, live here in Lakeport. Uh, it's a couple of months or several months now I brought to you guys, uh, asking if you'd take a look and see about, uh, changing, I don't know what needs to be changed, but to make it so you can burn, uh, here in the city of Lakeport. And I, I talked to a couple of my neighbors, I brought signed letters from them, um, and was just wondering if, if, uh, you guys would be able to, before we go head into winter and stuff like that, uh, consider doing that. I talked with Ryan Langberg down at, uh, Air Quality, and he says that he could help work with any kind of variance, uh, pop, you know, that needed, that would be specific even to the, the, uh, property location. And so I'm on a, I'm on a lot, a lot, I have about five and a half acres, uh, up by the freeway. I have two other neighbors up by me that are five, about five acres apiece, and, um, and I don't think it's something that you're gonna have everyone in the city limits of Lakeport running to get a burn permit, because it would still be for, it would still follow the county burn permit for over an acre, uh, of land. And with the variance, you could actually, it could actually be designed specifically, when I was talking with Ryan at Air Quality, to just specific lots, um, even on, you could say, specific days where even though there may be a county-wide burning, if the winds blow in the wrong direction, and it's gonna be a smoke nuisance to someone, that it could actually be, you know, restricted more, more so, if that's a concern. But, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot of lots, uh, two years ago, I, two years ago, I, uh, I took a, a dump trailer with, uh, it was a, uh, eight and a half by 16, and I took 16 loads out of my property and it cost me a fortune. And not that I have to do that every, every year, that was, but to keep the status quo, basically, with, you know, branches falling and this kind of stuff, it's a lot more than a green wastebasket can, can handle on five and a half acres, and that's the same for my neighbors. So I realize that you can't really, you, you guys can't do anything today about it, but I don't know if it's something that you guys are able to put on the agenda, uh, for future, but I'd like to see about getting, my request is, is do you have to, you know, have it discussed or see if there's something we can do before the burn season comes in. And with that, I think my three minutes are about up, so, um, thank you guys for being here and all that you guys do.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, moving on. Proclamation. We have a proclamation here designating the month of September as, September 2019, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer by their 20th birthday, and whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to 66 years for adult cancer diagnosis, and whereas throughout the country, organizations, advocates and hospitals work to increase the awareness of childhood cancer, and whereas due to high participation and advances in medical treatment, mortality rates in childhood cancer have declined over the past four decades. However, despite such advances, 1,800 children die of cancer each year in the United States. And whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health condition, conditions as a child, I'm sorry, chronic health condition as a result of their treatment, toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas throughout the United States, organizations, advocates and hospitals work to increase awareness of the signs of childhood cancer, advocate for active cancer screening tests and treatments, and support the families affected by childhood cancer. And whereas only by increasing awareness will it be possible to control and ultimately defeat this disease. Whereas it is vital, those affected by childhood cancer have access to quality and affordable care and research for all forms of childhood cancer be supported. And whereas the deter, the determination and bravery of which these children fight these battles should be recognized and commended by all of us. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the city council, the city of Lakeport does here, hereby designate September 2019 Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Lakeport. I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lakeport this third day of September 2019. Let it be proclaimed. Public Works Director.
Actually, I'm gonna pass this off to Kevin.
Okay.
Because it's more funding related, which I don't, with different funds that I normally deal with.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. Um, this, this project, uh, came before your council in, uh, May, and, um, as you recall, there, we received, this was one project where we had to go out multiple times for bids and we only received one bid. The, the bid was originally, uh, 235,610 for the city hall remodel project. Um, this here before you tonight is a change order, um, which, you know, David and I discussed earlier, you don't see this very often, it actually went down as a result of switching it from night work, uh, to, uh, day work. Um, and we've worked very closely with the contractor as far as, uh, they're gonna start kind of on a three-day weekend so they can get some of the loud stuff out of the way, and, um, and they're, it's still construction, there will be noise and impacts, but they're gonna do their best to limit those impacts upon, uh, regular city business. The other item is a change order, um, about halfway through this process and working with, um, CDBG, uh, we were able to find out that we can use some of our PI money, that's program income monies that we receive, those are payments back on loans issued by the city, um, that this project is eligible for that use, um, because a large portion of this project is, uh, furthering making city hall ADA compliant, uh, with the, uh, front window counter having, uh, ADA space, and then also improving the, um, ADA path of travel throughout the building as well, not only for the public, but for, uh, for employees as well. So it's kind of two things going on, you have a change order, um, reducing it, uh, down to, uh, a bit, and then another small change order, uh, to, for the contractor to do the administration paperwork that's necessary in, uh, now that this project would be federalized. And I think overall, we have, uh, approximately $33,000 in PI money through CDBG right now, uh, so all that would be eligible to go towards this project, uh, as previously, it would be all coming from the general fund, so that would be the change on it. We don't have a timeline scheduled as far, uh, with them yet, they were originally hoping to, uh, start here, uh, right around following Labor Day. Unfortunately, it took them a few extra weeks to finish up the paperwork, we're still haven't completely got the contract squared away, uh, still, um, waiting for some insurance documentation from them, but it's our hope that they'll be starting that project in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Doug. Does anybody on council have any questions?
I got one thing, um, on the budget adjustment, on our fiscal impact, you have budget adjustment needed, yes, and it says if yes, the amount appropriate increase, and you got 191,700, shouldn't it be 3,900 there? Increases 3,900, which would bring it to 191.
Correct, yeah, I mean, well.
Shouldn't that be the 3,900 there? That's my question.
Yes.
Okay, so for this document, please change that. Correct. I don't mind seeing this wrong.
Are you talking about the staff report?
Yeah, in the staff report.
Fiscal impact there.
It says under fiscal impact.
Yeah, I mean, where it says the budget adjustment needed, yes.
And then it says.
187,860 had been previously appropriated, an additional 3,900 is being requested.
Right.
Budget adjustment needed, yes, oh, budget item, yes.
The bu, the budget, right there, the budget adjustment, yes.
I mean, the one that.
Yes, that's the appropriate increase. We're not increasing at 191,000, right? We're increasing at the 3,900.
Correct.
So that should be changed to 3,900.
Okay, I was looking at a different line. Yes, you're correct.
I'm just making sure that's right, that's all.
Hey, Kevin, to clarify, you said that the, the program income, the 33,000 parts of that could go against that, because right now, this is all coming out of general fund, but 33,000, up to 32,000 could be backed out if, if that works well.
33,000 is what we have currently in PI. I think even more of the project would be eligible if we had additional PI money. I don't, if you want to clarify.
Yeah, as, I'm not certain as to how much of the project is eligible for PI, but as, if we were to receive more loan payments, you know, until the project is completed, we could also apply that against the cost of the project.
So in other words, it's like a coefficient of what percentage of it might be eligible as opposed to the entire project being eligible?
I believe so.
I mean, either way, it's, it's a, it's a good thing that we can apply some of it.
Yes, absolutely.
And then the other question I had, it was like, this 3,900 is because we're trying to apply this. Is this on our side, or is this paperwork that an administrative cost on Bridges Construction side?
It would be on Bridges Construction. They're going to need to provide quite a bit of extra detail in regards to prevailing wage and, and from all, from not only their employees, but any subcontractors they use. When, when it moves to federal level, there is, there is quite a bit more reporting that has to be done. It's extra reporting on us as well, but I mean, the largest burden is on, is on Bridges Construction.
And that's all about transparency?
That's correct.
That's it for me. Just having a. An issue understanding, the, the bid was originally the 235, and it dropped down. I, I just don't understand why you need an extra $3,900 if we already said okay to the, to the 235.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is split into two contract amendments. The first contract amendment is the reduction from 235 to 187, and then the second contract amendment is an increase of 3,900 to.
Because it went from non-federal to federal.
Sure. Okay. Is there anything else from council?
No.
There's a mayor.
Oh, so go ahead.
Now I gotta ask the public.
Oh, yeah.
David gets mad when I don't do that. Is there any public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, move to amend the construction contract to Bridges Construction for the City Hall remodel project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that takes care of both, both matters of redemption.
That's it.
Okay, wonderful. City Council Communications. Dave?
No report.
Doug?
Now, we're, our new area that we're trying out some, some new road treatments, we're doing a double chip seal on Berry Street in the end of Armstrong, and we got the first layer of chips down today, and we'll get the second layer down tomorrow. So we're going to be watching that very closely and see how that holds up, and hopefully we can maybe come up with some options with some more of our low-volume residential streets that we can't afford to pave. If this chip seal holds up, then we might be looking at changing our strategies and start doing more chip seals again in the City of Lakeport to try to give people a better road.
Awesome.
So just want to let you know that, and other than that, we're just really busy.
Nick. I'm going to adjourn. Chief.
We'll be promoting a new lieutenant next week. You say you should see something message-wise hopefully by the end of the week on that.
Awesome. Kevin?
Yeah, really quickly, next Wednesday and, yes, next Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to be hosting a local open house for, for local businesses, rather. If you recall, when we signed that contract with retail strategies for, for some retail recruitment assistance, and one of the reasons we liked Retail Coach was that they also included a piece on assisting with retention as well. They've done quite a bit of background information, some gap analysis and stuff, and so we're, we're going to be presenting that to the local community the afternoons, right here in the council chambers, 3:30 to 5:30 on September 11th and 12th.
Kelly?
No report.
You ready?
No report.
Stacy?
No report.
Okay.
No report.
Okay.
No report.
Okay. No report. No report. And I also have no report.